Good evening, Alpha Hill Room. We're going to start the meeting. If everyone would please take a seat, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Bleecker, could you please take roll call?
Yes. Good evening, Ms. Conoco.
Here.
Ms. Marvettich. Dr. Morthee.
Here.
Mr. Manjekovitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Goen.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Gower.
Here.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Here.
And Ms. Baron.
Here. Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Records specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on December 12th, 2018, in the Administrative Offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Would everyone please rise for a salute to the flag? Mr. Kazmarski, would you like to lead us in the salute? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our motion to recess to executive session, Mr. Kazmarski, second by Ms. Conoco. We'll be back momentarily. Thank you. Motion to reconvene, Ms. Conoco, second by Dr. Morthee. I know we lost her, but we have agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Jen Park, 6 Divine Drive. I have a question regarding Agenda Item S, which is the district goals. So my question is, well, I have a couple of questions, but I know with the rules, just asking one. So my main question is, how come goals for the 2018-2019 school year being voted upon in December of 2018? I was just wondering if this is normal practice or what the case is.
It is a great question, Ms. Park. We told the board about these on the Friday notes, which is the information that I sent home to them in Friday, prior to a board meeting in September. And so although they were aware of them, and they were put together by our administrative staff during the summer, I neglected to put them on the agenda. So the board was aware, our administrators certainly are aware, have developed building goals that address the district goals, but it was my oversight.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Could you tell me if these goals are going to impact the assessment and evaluation of the circulation checkout? Or are these goals created back in the summertime and they're just now being on the agenda?
The latter part of your question.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Slough Barrow, 43 Thunderhead Place. So my question is regarding the same item, and I just wanted to know, the federal government just came out with Charting a Course for Success: America's Strategy for STEM Education, a report by the Committee on STEM Education of the National Science and Technology Council in December of 2018. And I wanted to know if that would be taken a look at and some of the ideas and some of the programs that they discuss would be considered going forward with these goals?
We'll certainly take a look at it. It just came out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Shown, have a report for us this evening.
I do. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you. I wasn't really looking for that. It is wonderful to see all of you here. I know why certainly most of you are here this evening, and there is no better way than to spend a Wednesday night in the Mawa Board of Education offices honoring the teachers and the staff members that deserve it the most. So I know our exec was a little bit long tonight. Our apologies, we had a bunch to cover, but we did. Thank you for waiting. It will be well worth your while, and it will be remembered fondly for a long time by the staff members you're here to support.
Hi.
Hi.
As we watch these videos, what's really important to know is that all of the questions or the interviewing of parents or staff members or students is not planned. So everything that is showcased here is all from a very authentic, honest, candid place, which makes it that much more valuable. I see former students in the audience, I see retirees, staff members and their families. Thank you for being here.
So let's begin. Our first honoree today, staff member choice, is Christine Noonan. Christine Noonan, everybody clap! Oh, that'll work! Christine Noonan has worked in our district for 14 years. As the Main Office Secretary of Betsy Ross School, Christine is truly passionate about her job. Through her work, Christine demonstrates her care for every child, family, and staff member, supporting and informing them regularly. She takes great pride in all that she does, and Betsy Ross is honored that Christine is the first to face staff, students, and visitors see every day.
Well, I've been at Betsy Ross for 13, maybe 14 years, but I knew about it, that it was a special place because my kids both run here. My new principal called and said there was a power position open. I wasn't sure I was really wanting to do it, if I could do it, so I took the position. I was at Karen Johnson's Room, which is the best place to start. Learned so much from her. I was in the classroom for a few years. I learned a lot about art, which was a totally different form. I was a secretary and retired, I took a position. I worked for the past 15 years. I was a high school student with Christine and her mother. I was writing a book for 14 years. And Christine and I, as always, have been a couple of humanists. I mean, if you should listen to her, that's right. She had a good attitude, she was very smart. She doesn't want to be found calling her a maid. She was really friendly with her mother. And she's a specialist in art, and she's always been sure that I have a thing for her. And she's a woman who needs it for. And she deals with the H.O.S., such as like the Rockefell. She is instrumental in security. I don't think anybody wants, whether it's a location, whether it's a location, whether it's, you know, the sale of people bringing it to buy or whatever. She's just very diligent, and I, I'm very, very proud to her. I really do appreciate it. I do not suppose, I do have a lot of teachers who are best teachers. The kids come from, because I'm Betsy Ross, so they come from Betsy Ross, because the president's office, the office, the worst of the world. So it's like, I bet you, you know, the teachers should come around now, the white backs, the kids are coming, they're coming to the house, they don't ask me, they don't say anything, the kids don't do anything. No, I would just, I apologize. So if I have my job to go up to the nurse or something, she lies and slaps me. And I'm just telling my girl, I'm so happy, I'm really happy. She's always has, um, it's gonna be a little crazy. So the children are so funny, because last time, she had one of my son with a desk, so when they walk in, there's like this little head, you know? And she's, she's like, how come I look like that? It could be anything from a baby or a baby. Where if we sit down, she's going, she's having a nice time, and she's saying, I love you, like this. And, you know, she's so lovely. And then I turn, I just think, oh, they're going to like, oh, they're going to like, oh, they're going to like, and she's just, she makes this battle out of my room. She, she keeps all the, that you're playing her, because I gave you the call for it, right? My day, my day. And then she'll tell me, you know, it's where I'm doing, like, you know, this happened. It's okay, we did this, this or this. So she just is that person. She has everything to her, her school. But she hates my head, and her friends are, um, having their stuff that she does, that I can, just to make, make this work. So a couple of weeks ago, as parents, if you're doing, they kind of, they felt down, and I was having a really, really rough time. And I had two apples, and she just looked at me, just embraced me in this big hug, and she, she, she asked so many questions, that she knew that I needed her in a different role than I ever needed her before, and she was really thinking, well, you need that person for me. That was one of those moments, I think it was a very special moment. And they had the kid in front of you, that's what makes them, she's like, come do my part, but, 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 fun, you know, the kids, just, you know, I'm taking the kids, making smiles.
It's time for that hug, you gotta stand.
All right, our next staff highlight is Patty Simons. Patty, you can wave. Patty has been a teacher at George Washington School for 22 years. With a passion for teaching, Patty has proven that with hard work, dedication, and love for her students, every student can be successful. Patty's enthusiasm for teaching and learning is contagious, and her impact on her students and colleagues is immeasurable. Although GW is her home, Patty's reach has extended far beyond the walls of George Washington School. She has served as a mentor, a teacher leader, and trainer for many colleagues across the district. We're thrilled to acknowledge Patty for her dedication to our students, unwavering support of colleagues, and willingness to be great.
I started out after high school, I was an acting director at my firm, at Monclerston College. I enjoyed it, but I just realized it wasn't going to be easy. I went to work for the Great Seas, was for UNHAPP as a service director of the district. Well, I signed my court name, from basic, and so I was job posting, and I was taking them down, so I came, I interviewed, like, the job. So I, so I entered, first, I didn't have to, I, I was, um, support classes, and working with the schools, working with the schools. Um, so I got work, and I started growing, and then I went over to the middle school, took lunch, served the lunch. I got to start, lay up, cut that, and gave us money. I was desperately tired, I was like, working with these little kids. And I started to feel like that was, I was like, I was like, they were too young, closely. And I had had my experience at the time, still started my progress, and I took to my self, I would love to teach. I just thought I had to go back, because I was also into going for chef teacher jobs. I figured, if I could teach little kids, I would teach what I knew. But I have a sense of, I'm a servant, and I see, I'm a servant, and I'm a servant, so I'm, that class may happen, I felt it too. Uh, I got stuck with the, with the, and, and I was able to go back to it, because again, it was good to me. I had another freshman class in the spirit room, and that's where it started. She's a nice kid, she's a nice, I love her so much. She has a lot of nice work, she has a lot of nice kids. And then, and then I, so she gets here at school, and the rest is teaching, and I work, and I'm teaching, she has always here, my class, and it's a younger age.
I went home and grabbed my guitar. And I came back and I went into Kathy Bennett, who was the principal of the tennis office. And I played her a high middle song to a Cat Stevens tune that I knew. And she was like, you're nuts. But I woke up once at noon for an interview. So that's how it all figured out.
When we talk about students being round and trying to get them to be round and individuals, I think about Debbie Bennett, my mom, the teacher. Because she always thinks outside the box when it comes to instructing her students and getting them engaged into learning what she is trying to teach them.
She thinks of ideas from her students when other ideas might not work. She's willing to try anything to get a student to learn. And I think that's one of the things that's most special about her. So I also love me and Debbie when I saw your email. She was like the first person that I thought of. And I think that's mostly because I've worked so closely with her over the past few years. She is one of those people, she has this brain. She's like vivacious. She has a passion. And a lot of people say they have a passion for doing it, but she really does. And she shows it. She will play the guitar, dance, do anything she has to do to get a kid to learn a new skill. She has the go-kart popping spag, the go-kart bag of chocolate. She goes around with a little prophecy, so she'll stop. But she'll try with kids, just to get them to learn a skill. And those are some things you can't always teach. I think it's just in her. She's very creative. She's extremely creative and can't stop coming to her class. There's something wonderful things about Debbie. She is honestly one of the most generous people that I've ever met. She's generous with her time, with her ideas, and anything she can do to help you. She's also one of the most positive people I've ever worked with. She always has wonderful things to say about everybody. And the class is always half full with Debbie. They come in here, they feel comfortable, they're away from all their peers. They, um, they're just shining. And I just can't wait to witness that. When I come through the door here, it's refreshing. My wife kind of stays outside. Any big problems, you know? When I come in, Dorothy's like, hey, guys! You know, she puts her ass on there and let me know. Oh, it's so cool. Like, she, she needs the batches. She's very great. Wherever I go into, I see a shining face. The, the staff, the kids. I would say that that's probably one of the best parts about working here. One of the things for me, um, I've been here for over a year. Debbie cares about everybody else more than she cares about herself. She just goes the extra mile that if you need something, she'll have it for you the next time. She's always willing to give you a coat or a shirt back. Not that she wears one, but she's very good. She's always warm, outside, inside, it really doesn't matter to Debbie. She thinks of everyone all the time. It's very selfless of her. Uh, she's very kind and loving and I really wish I could, I'm sorry.
It can rain so fast, she will start raining out. Um, now I don't make mistakes, it rains so fast.
She enjoys running pace. She did jackhammer tricks. I can remember literally again, because not only is she a teacher, she can do shoot rock. And she's a player. And she puts all of this stuff to her teaching, because she has so much life experience. So she's encouraging the kids by her life experience too. So that was great. Okay, so Debbie was outside the box. And one day she came in, she has those tools in her classroom. And I didn't know that when I just walked into her classroom. She came in with her toolkit. And she said, I have a good idea. I'm gonna take this shelf off where we keep the copies. And I turned it over to the couch for the kids. It's always like days like that that I truly appreciate and just really love about her. Everyone makes it a point with everyone else to, like, really owe you. And I've never had that anywhere else, anywhere I've worked my whole life. And it's been a long journey. So coming here is a highlight, not just of my job, but it's the highlight of my life.
Our next staff highlight is from Joyce Kilmer School, Bob Ruffo. Uh, where's Bob? Did Bob show up? Bob, can you stand up so we make sure you're here? Oh, okay, there you are. Hi, Bob. Uh, Bob Ruffo has been a dedicated teacher for 21 years. Eighteen of the 21 years have been in the Mawa Public School District. Colleagues and administration characterize Bob as helpful, supportive, and highlight particularly his authentic love for students. Bob not only has spent his teaching career in Mawa, but he also experienced the Mawa school system as a student himself. Mr. Ruffo is often touted as being a leader amongst his colleagues, as well as a balanced presence in the classroom that consists of a kindness, a sense of humor, and also a diligent work ethic.
My name is Bob Ruffo. I'm a fifth grade teacher here at Joyce Kilmer School. I teach math and science. I work with Mrs. McClaren here as my dominant teacher. I work with her on Tavish and Dry, and my father still lives. This is McClaren here, also working on Tavish and Dry. Um, I'm a bachelor of arts, uh, I went to Colorado Perry, because there was a few years, a little too old ages, we couldn't tell. So there was a very special place. I jumped at the chance to come to Joyce Kilmer School. It was one of my favorite boroughs, one of my favorite schools when I was a child. It's a bad hair, and listen to that, it's like, it's wonderful.
Bob is rather kind, he's always genuine, individual, but so animated. And he loves everyone's attention. Whether it's jokes, he sings, he dances, he keeps the children interested and excited.
I thought I was entrusted to understand him, just like Wendy. He can bring in so many meaningful ideas and so many contributions to make things work. A lot of it, it was speaking, while they have credit moments where we go with our ideas, while I'm here discussing things out, there's, there's many things, but in a way, in a way, that Wendy said he was true to. And I, I think the kids appreciate that too. Also, they know that their teacher was always on your side.
I think the first time I met Bob was in sixth time. And he was telling me how he does battle rockets. And he wanted to invite me up to the field to go see him with the students with the battle rockets. And the first time I saw him, the kids were so excited about these rockets that shoot up into the air. And he was so excited about that, and I thought that was fantastic. And I was really excited to get to his classroom.
Well, I'm happy to be a student of his class. He can, he can do anything with his mind. And he has such a great connection with his kids. I listened to him when I had a chance to observe him with his student of the day. And the children are so excited to be selected student of the day. They run the class, people overseas, and I have many critics for them.
I'm very proud of him. I understand the pride is very well. I understand the challenges and tribulations they go through. And I've also seen their offices from the Royal Digital Society to the Digital Society. And I think this is the pride of them, which is a fact of them.
Yeah, I get some fun things, like he, he, he has things like, um, the high skills, like, um, charisma, like, no, 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 that's a daily life.
He's a very nice teacher, like, he understands to tell people, like, what to do. And if they don't understand something, he will work with them separately. And he always gives us full time on Fridays, which is very nice of him to make mistakes.
I love that he's so humble. I mean, I work with him and we try to keep him kind of fine with you. In the classroom, and, and, uh, he's, he just does it all.
Uh, anything you want to add from Bob, you could tell him about, or you can do anybody. I, so it's awesome. And I can just spot covered. Bob would just be like, okay, I got it, no problem. That's just the type of person he is. If you want him, he's there.
He is very passionate about the idea of students creating these with their hands. And while watching and listening to him talk about it, you see, actually, like, this twinkle in his eyes, you know, and he's so passionate about expressing it. It's really been an incredible thing, whoever's been able to be a part of it. And not just the children putting this rocket together from beginning to end, but the way they actually are sending off their rockets is just remarkable.
Well, I think I'm an actual part of the community. I mean, I work as a fifth grade team, everybody gets along. I work as a fifth grade math and science team. Um, we hit back if there's anything that adds to the bar. Uh, going over my school's grade one, I was a volunteer. Uh, I've been in almost every community since in basketball, from maybe from professional development to, uh, the soccer club, to, uh, the women's cricket. So I'm very proud, very happy to be in that, uh, in the fashion department.
Congratulations, Bob.
What I don't understand, free Fridays. I always forget you find yourself like Burt Reynolds. I look for my Don Bell.
Linda Walter, can you, can you stand up so we know where you are? There you are, hi Linda.
Linda Walter is the embodiment of what it means to be part of the Ramapo Ridge family. She's spent her career teaching generations of young minds to not only love science, but perhaps, and more importantly, to also be respectful and responsible young men and women. From the Disney World tapestries hanging on the classroom walls, to the daily doses of sage life advice, Ms. Walter has created a classroom environment where the students are happy, confident, and are set up for success. Linda's selflessness for her students and her colleagues truly defines her career for those who have had her as a teacher and for those who have known her as a friend.
I've been a teacher since I was three years old. I remember watching, I remember watching my teacher, um, saying to myself, I'm gonna be just like that. And work with all the children. And then I had two teachers who made a difference in my life. I had a biology teacher when I was in ninth grade, who I just said was the best thing that ever happened. And then I had another ninth grade teacher, social studies teacher, which is not a certification. But it's true, that it's nice to be important, but it's important to be less. And I never forgot that a couple of years ago, I found a plant that has that. And I have a home classroom. When I first came out, we were doing a radio rap this summer. And I was able to have some good conversations with her. And I know that way, I welcome and share this with our sixth grade students every day. She's that welcome to me. And I sense that she just has a wealth of information to share. And also, my wife's been with me, I heard conversations with her, that her parts are like this. And she's very passionate about what she does.
Yeah, she's been with the students, but all the school days, we're really compatible. Like Brian's on NHS, the school plan, um, the standard school, the earthbound days. It's, it's really quite amazing to have, to, well, I'd like to have such an educator with us.
I think that a teacher is way ahead of what we would want to talk about the whole child. I was very happy to use, uh, really talented, and we're all, we're all, we're all, we're all, and have the kids get up and say, you know, we're a teacher. It's all about character, right? We're, we're, and we're, we're a teaching product. A lot of kids are tactically respectful, they're tough to talk to, they're gutsy, they're tough to have a real responsibility.
When you say, what do you teach? She teaches kids, you know? She teaches science, but she teaches kids. It's the whole package. Uh, she takes a lot of pride in what she does, I would say. And it's not limited to just our department, but I work with her also in the play. And she's the director, and then the stage crew director. And we're just working with so many different classes of the school all the time. And I can watch it with everybody.
She takes the lead in on social studies with the department, who's gonna say, right, something special, I'll do it for someone, and it's always the way it steps up and says, let's get together, let's do this. She kind of is very worldly. And she's a leader, and a good example, and a team player.
I've always been a very giving person, a very charitable person, personally, very empathetic person. And I thought that I'm worthy to be a teacher where I can have plenty of difference in the lives of the kids. I think content is important, but I think teaching to the whole child, and letting them grow into the person that they can be socially and emotionally and academically, there's nothing better than that. Everything that she gives beyond the classroom, um, I think speaks to the educator that she is.
She sets the very, very high standards, someone to strive to, and look up to.
And someone who's, um, I'm a very big Disney enthusiast. She will send me pictures of what she's doing, or FaceTime, or something like that, when she's at the box. And, and I was just kind of, it's like a Disney, as you can see, I love Disney.
Then I've been in the general station. And I've also been in catastrophe training station. And I've been given more hours to do stat work than to do other things. I was chosen to be the screener. So every time there was something that was bad, I had to scream. And I was able to hear about twenty thousand dollars in money. She's probably one of the generations of the kids, and they're not to scream, I don't know, and she's like a man of Mawa. Um, she knows the kids, she knows the sisters and the kids, she knows the parents, she's talking grandparents. So she tells most of the people that she interacts with, and it's, uh, you know, talking generations of people that she's having affect on, that's, that's something, that's a gift.
She was my favorite teacher. And we asked, I always asked her how I liked to go to her class every day. It wasn't just science, you know? Because we're having a bad morning, and I was like, oh, we're going into the classroom. Definitely. And I loved her teaching style too, like she explained things to me well. Well, uh, you know, that she explained, and you could really understand it, and relate to how she explained it.
Ramapo Ridge has always been a, uh, the parents are wonderful, the parents are wonderful, the administration that I've always worked with has been wonderful. And it's just such a happy place to be, do your best, be quiet, build relationships with families and with children. Know what you do, never give up, laugh at yourself, and I think you'll be happy.
Yes, he is, he's probably the to- the tallest person in this room. Mr. Zandanelle, can you stand and just wave to everyone?
Wait a minute.
There we go. Thank you, Mike. Mike Zandanelle is an outstanding special education teacher who has graciously served MHS for the last thirty-one years. He has completed most of his years teaching science with the science department as a collaborating teacher, reaching special education and general ed- general education students. He is loyal, always acts with integrity, and puts the needs of his students first. Mike has consistently assisted the school community by being a professional who has a genuine care that is rooted in professionalism and dependability.
Uh, my name is Mike Zandanelle. And I've been a member of the Mawa High School faculty for thirty-one years. I always wondered that there was a niche I would fall into as far as working with, with youth. My aunt, who was in Mawa as a matter of fact, who is not a social school teacher, suggested that rather than pursue a career in education, finding a field as a job. My aunt said, it's a very, very room for you to call special education out to open up. So I got a special education, uh, a job opening happens here. You said, who I was. As I say, took a look at me and hired me. I like to think that I had other qualifications other than my size. And the rest is as strong as they say. I've known Mike Zandanelle for twenty-nine years. He is our senior staff member, uh, in our building, not in age, but in years of experience here at the high school. I first got to know Mike when my supervisor told me I was going to be a collaborative science teacher. So Mike and I were collaborative teachers, uh, for a little bit of time. I've now been his principal for seventeen years. Mike, for me, is a standout professional. The characteristic I really admire about Mike the most is his care for children, his ethics, and his honesty.
Mike is a gentle giant. He's super tall, but very sweet. He has a great relationship with the kids, the kids love him.
I totally agree with that. He comes home, he likes to pick his own two men, but the kids know he's got a heart of gold. They take advantage of that.
He's definitely passionate about our students, so he goes above and beyond for them. Um, when they need help, he's there. He also keeps up with the students that are graduating, the women. There's always, uh, conversations that we're having on Monday, and I'm like, oh, it's Saturday, and you know, this is about Saturday, which is great, but he still cares about the women that graduate.
When I first came here, Mike was ready to greet me. He's, uh, always a guy with a positive attitude. Anyways, I see him as a role model for many people in the building. He's, he's a silent leader. Mike really has the best interest of kids at heart and is always willing to go the, the extra step to support kids in the classroom.
He's kind of lots of big thoughts, people, uh, experience, all of us, how do you get it?
It's been a lot of time, you get it? It's like, it's my family, my people, it's people that succeed. I have like a tough time, like in big classes, I'm like, I don't like class. I'm just making my hands on the bed. I need to come at any time after school. I want to hear my dad's like, "You're a handsome kid." I'm just like, "Yeah." Like, so I can come in, wake him up now.
My notion of special ed comes from the way I think I analyze things. Because I will freely admit I'm not classified or anything, but I think I know how to learn. So when I see those Mike expressions, and I don't smell smoke, I'm like, "All right, I need to say this a different way. We need to do this a different way." And that's key, the special ed. Why would my students take a chemistry course beyond this? No. Why benefit them beyond me teaching lesson kids? I know each means things well, and I know a morning does make them look at everything else you look pretty clean, gas, and hurt yourself. But that's important, life lesson.
When you step into the classroom in Mike's room, you just have a positive feeling. It wouldn't be uncommon to hear him singing the elements of the periodic table out loud to the kids, coming up with some kind of crazy acronym for them to remember something. It really, it works out well. The kids love him. And overall, I'm super happy to, he's part of our team in some ways, raises the bar for our department, and is always able to support his colleagues.
There's another duck that goes into the courtyard, and Mike has taken the power himself to take care of this duck. He's done this for several years.
Approximately five or six years ago, while walking around the courtyard on Rexton, I noticed a female duck, and her downings. I instantly, she had laid a nest in one of the tall grasses. I was a physics teacher here at the time, and I decided, all right, do an art prep, we pop the doors open, and smooth them out, which I did.
He comes on Saturdays and makes sure that it has water, he brings chilies, and he makes sure that one of the duck has the legs that hatch. He pushes them through the halls, out of the school, actually over towards Central Rivers.
That's kind of ducking around the hall. Now, in honesty, I'm thinking, I hope she stops doing that, because it is distressing to me.
Over the years that I've known Mike, he's had some difficult children in class, and he's always willing to spend extra time with them after school. He'll work out labs with them on his own time. He could be here until, you know, four or five o'clock working with a kid.
And also, I think he's a light person. If I was like, "Oh, if I was in a mission, you know, I could have class, then I could talk to him without having to..." There's always somebody out there who's been worried about him, and that's...
I really work on with our kids, and they're somebody I've, well, I feel for them as well, because to have them, not to doubt their lives, but to judge them harshly, that trust and kindness and understanding, that's not going to fit that role for them in their lives. Wait, 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 hold on. I had submitted a kiss picture, which I'm glad you didn't.
I just got to have to explain that not all middle-aged men who are kissing are good in their mother's place. I want to thank the college people who have made, I want to thank people who came from great distances to be here. Really appreciate it. Can't stand to hear from them. It's a way to honor, and 30 years of knowledge, you think, than any other place I've ever been.
You want to dismiss everybody?
Oh, please.
Absolutely. As wonderful as it is to see all of you, it is a quarter after eight. You have families to return to. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Did your students record?
He has one whole other experience with the valley.
You had, you had?
Yeah. Frenchman here.
That's cool.
Him and Roncor.
Oh, Roncor. Both gentle giants.
Two little guys.
Wow. Something else.
Oh, I'm just continuing. I don't know.
Thank you all for coming. I just want to let you know that we have to continue with the meeting, so if you could, please just try to keep it down a little bit. You know, it's a lot of enthusiastic people. Okay, Mr. Bueger, do you have a meeting report for us this evening?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Last thing, I would just say a handful of updates regarding the stimulation. Exterior brickwork is being currently being installed and will continue as long as weather permits. This work is originally scheduled for spring, but the openings in the schedule are already moved out up to now. Interior walls are near completion, and steel lintels and expanded doorways and entrances are on site and being installed this week. Steel supports and steel roof decking is scheduled for delivery next week. Still moving along very well on that project. Other items just for the community as well as for the board. Remind that our next board meeting is on January 3rd, that's on a Thursday night. It's a little bit off schedule from our normal Wednesday nights. And happy holidays to everybody during the holiday season.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. Mr. Fair, do you have anything for us this evening?
No.
Thank you very much. Okay, my report for this evening. The 2018 All Eastern Chorus Vocalists of Olivia Leto, Aaron Lockwood, and Dante Mejia have been accepted into the 2019 All Eastern Choruses, and they will perform next April in Pittsburgh with 440 singers from Delaware to Maine. So congratulations to the singing T-birds. Bergen County Band results. Congratulations to the following Mawa High School band students on successfully auditioning and being accepted into the 2019 Bergen County Band. Maxwell Mejia for oboe, first chair. Matthew Slockbauer for trumpet. Joshua Segaria for trumpet. Juliet Corliss for horn. Gabriela Vici Domini for trombone. Yeti Z for mallet percussion, first chair. And also honorable mention should go to Jonathan Zhang, clarinet. Brendan Noda Francesco, clarinet. And Aaron Ryan, bass clarinet, each tying for alternate spots in the band. So congratulations to everyone. The Mawa Schools Foundation update, and a big thank you. The following fraud grants were approved for full or partial funding. Q Robotics Exploration at Ramapo Ridge. Day in Clay at Lenape Meadows. Gaga Ball Pit at JK. Maker Space at JK. 3D printers. Steam Pathways Technology at the high school. Author Day Christopher Grabenstein at JK. And Author Day Amy Ludwig, Osmo ambassadors for GW. And then in other news, Mrs. Duffy from the Mawa Schools Foundation reported that they met with the MEA last week and are very excited to partner with them for our upcoming Thunderbird Run on 5/19/2019. They will be sponsoring the kid run portion of the event. And this is very exciting to have our teachers involved with such a big part of our community day. Some more details will follow about the Thunderbird Run after the holidays. And I do want to wish happy holidays to those who have celebrated Hanukkah and those who will be celebrating Christmas. Happy Hanukkah to all, Merry Christmas to all. Do we have any board committee reports this evening?
Policy on 15K, second reading and adoption of 3282 and 4282, which again are use of social networking sites for teaching and support staff. And this was the one that we did a couple of months ago, and at the request of the MEA, that we reviewed and made some tweaks to for the second reading and adoption tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gallo?
I have a report from the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met on this past Monday to review the 2019-20 budget schedule and also to set up meetings for our committee for, basically from the middle of January to early March. We also reviewed the business plan and preliminary cost projections for implementing the one-on-one computer initiative. We've reviewed a few of the capital projects that were deferred from last year, including the library window replacement, the concession stand, and security vestibules at the high school, JK and Lenape Meadows. This passed at the 29th, council meeting on the 29th. Boswell Engineering and their traffic expert presented suggestions for safety upgrades at the Ridge-JK High School driveway intersection. We look forward to working with the council on moving forward on that as best as we can. And meanwhile, we'll be meeting, I think, with Boswell in the next couple of weeks to see what other initiatives or alternatives we have to improve the safety of that intersection. For Negotiations Committee, we met on November 29th with Kyle and Dennis to review the issues that we would think we'd like to advance with the MEA. And we also set up a date with the MEA to meet on next Monday, December 17th, to begin sort of an informal kickoff, sort of a team meeting situation. And I'm very thankful that the MEA carved out the time to do that for us. And we look forward to a productive and fruitful negotiation session.
Thank you very much.
Got one from the Technology Committee, just jumping on board. Mike said we met last night with regards to financing facility for the computers for the one-to-one deployment in the next school year. And we met technology committee standpoint to go over those computers and the laptops we're using in the high school as well as the ridge. And it just brings up the point that it's, you know, two committees in two nights talking about this. And ultimately, it's going to be probably a couple more committees after that between policy and financing facilities. A whole lot's going to go into this, to deploy the one-to-one in the high school in the next school year, as well as, as you'll see on the agenda in 15Z with regards to the technology services with the Level One, which we would like to bring in, which I think is a wonderful idea, which frees up our guys to get us ready for this. This is a huge undertaking, especially right out of the gate. So it's very exciting, but at the same time, it's not a, just give a kid a laptop and send him on his way. So the amount of things between curriculum, policy, technology, finance, I mean, it's going to be all-inclusive between now and June, and have it ready for September. So it's very exciting.
Thank you. Who else?
From Bergen County School Boards, in front of all of you is a holder. He represents the latest legislative updates of both of the New Jersey legislators, but it comes from School Boards Legislative Committee and Bergen County School Boards liaison. So some interesting things happening here. Enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on any reports or other non-agenda items? Yes, Mr. Gallo?
On November 27th, Peter, Linda, and I attended the county school boards meeting, and Peter allowed me to drive. Never again. Never again. There were two presentations at the meeting. One was on educational opportunities for the non-college-bound learner. This is a recent initiative of the New Jersey School Boards Foundation Association. And just speaking for myself, I see it as a very important issue of our times. It's an issue in education that's been a bit dormant for the past number of years. And, you know, the statistic that jumps out at me is that there are currently 44,000 jobs in New Jersey requiring high levels of skill that we're not training people to take, and 2 million nationwide. So these are issues that affect our economy, affect the livelihood of our students. The second presenter was from the Asbury Park School District, and she spoke about the integration of mindfulness and social-emotional learning initiatives in the Asbury Park District. She was a great speaker, but my takeaway was that I was so happy to come from Mawa, where we already have a very thorough, comprehensive program in this area. But it's always good to know that we're running with the leaders of the pack, so. And just on a personal note, this is my final meeting of my first term in office. It's been a very interesting experience. I think I've grown in my experience here. I won't be attending any first meeting in a general big way, but I just wanted to thank all my board colleagues, all these other staffs. This is my final ready. But I just want to say thank you to all of you for your support and for the recognition and support they've given us, and for the initiative that they've allowed us to make some progress on. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
awards presentation last week. I was accepting the phone, I was in the [inaudible]. But I did comment to my wife at the time, it's always great to see the amount of high-performance scholar athletes we do have. The amount of kids that do, the seniors as well as the underclass who are high on a roll, as well as on a roll, standing on that stage and enlisted in the program. I did forget I was supposed to bring in. But between the academics and the, you know, the sports as well, and we do very well here, and our Ramapo Ridge families should be, you know, should know well that the Mawa High School has a lot to offer in terms of academics and sports and other things outside of the sports, but especially the academics. And I should thank you for that. Going between either.
Thank you. Thank you for the plug.
We're going to send all the prospective academy students to you for the talking to.
I'm glad we have the conversation. You're the crew.
Yes, Dr. Morthe.
I just wanted to say congratulations to all the staff that we recognized, and I can say from personal experience, because my children have, and knew Patty Simons, Bob Brufow, Linda Walter, I mean Walter. So again, fantastic, and I think the highlight is really exciting, and it's exciting to see the great staff that we have in this district.
No doubt. Yes.
And to put it in perspective, there were two of the people tonight that Ben and I had as teachers.
No, you two. Okay, may I have a motion to move old business, please? Mrs. Conoco, followed by, seconded by Mr. Gallo.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky? And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to take, have a motion to move new business personnel, A through N. Oh, no, sorry. Let's do, let's do one first. Sorry. Trying to push things along. 15, new business, A through Z. May I have a motion to move on that, please, Mr.? Okay. Abstained. So A through Z, Dr. Morthe, and seconded by Mr. Kizmarsky. Do you have any questions, concerns, comments on any of these?
I just had a quick question on Q, the Chief of the 19-20 district calendar. It looks like we've added a day onto Memorial Day weekend?
We did.
Friday?
We did.
Could you just elaborate on the week?
We did. I'd be more than happy to. We did add the day onto Memorial Day weekend because what we found over the last two years, I'm hoping this year is different, is that we've utilized our four snow days pretty early. So when we had the ability based on how the calendar was rolling out, we chose to add it, because then it will become the first that we take away before we go into that April week. So we had the opportunity to add an extra day, which gave everyone an extra day off, but gave us a day to take off or bring the staff back in and leave the April break intact. So I'm glad you brought that up, but that was a conscious decision on our part for more time.
Thank you.
Since we've already had a snow day in November.
We're not talking about that.
I'm just praying to the snow gods.
What's it looking like for tomorrow, Dr. Morthe?
Oh, my gosh.
I have to take examples more, buddy.
Yes, you are, Peter. It's going to be a little bit.
Okay.
We'll get your car call.
Okay, so 15A to Z, we have a motion by Dr. Morthe, seconded by Mr. Kizmarsky. Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Abstaining 15A, check number 93238. 15L, I vote as present.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except on 15A, abstain from check numbers 93056, 93183, and 93264.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. I'd like a motion to move new business, A through NN. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Secone. Any comments, questions, on any of these items? I just want to say thank you to the volunteers that we have. Mr. Joseph Charles, who's volunteering to be the advisor for the film club, filmmaking club, the new filmmaking club. Michael Sasson, or Sasson, he's volunteer advisor for the indoor T-Bird percussion drum line. We passed that this evening. And Mr. Michael Wong, who's a volunteer for the robotics sessions and competitions. So thank you very much for, anyone that volunteers for our school district, really, really appreciate it. Okay, could you take the vote, please?
Of course.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Secone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. Public questions or comments, so this section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes.
Evelyn Slockbauer, 43 Thunderhead Place. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that I requested a copy of the library curriculum. And for first through third grade, in the library curriculum, it does state that there should allow, hold on, I'll read you the exact thing. Allow for sufficient time for children to complete their weekly book exchange. That's for the first, second, third grade. For the fourth, and I believe the fifth grade curriculum, it said that to, for the children to be able to evaluate their own ability to select resources that are engaging and appropriate for personal interests and needs. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, because I don't know if you've looked over the entire thing. And I also just wanted to make a note that I requested this from Kyle, and because we're going to this whole technology thing, he told me they had to print it out. I paid for my printed-out copy, but if we're truly going to technology, we could have done a Google Docs, and I could have gotten this out of Google Docs.
Good evening. John Fiesen, 25, Alton Court, Mawa, New Jersey. Tonight's a great night, you know? It's a night of recognition of a lot of people who are very special in the schools. And I wish the 26,000 people in Mawa would be able to come and fill this place up many times over and see what happens at a meeting like this, where this recognition takes place. It's really very, very good. And I would like to add my own contribution, my own two cents, because at the last council meeting, there was a young gentleman from the high school, and he did a great job in presenting to the council two items that were on his agenda, and he did it with poise, good word that I learned today, with poise, confidence, respect. And it was really very nice to see a young 17- or 18-year-old gentleman, or young man, get up in front of the council and the mayor and do what he did. And if that's typical of the high school students in Mawa, bravo! It's really wonderful. He got his two points across, and then he waited, he started at seven o'clock, and he waited until 11 o'clock to make his remarks during the second public session. Really great. So that's all I have to say. And this gentleman is, I got to mention his name, Austin Ritter, and he was just a showstopper two weeks ago. And Mr. Gallo is shaking his head because we were both sitting there and...
I wasn't sitting there. I watched.
Yeah, well. But it was really nice to see.
He was fantastic.
Yep.
He was on a great case.
The traffic light and the noise pollution. You know, he did a good job, and you don't see that often.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If he were to come to one of our meetings, he would not have to sit here that long.
Yes, he would not.
Most definitely, yes.
Thank you.
And happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Yes, see you too.
Thank you.
See you next year.
Hi, Matthew Slockbauer, 43 Thunderhead Place. I'm a student at Mawa High School, and currently the laptops that are provided to us in class are often very slow and don't always function the way we expect them to. I just want to make sure that when the one-to-one laptop plan is put into play, that the devices provided to us are going to function at a, at a speed that we will be able to use them, and that all the programs on them are going to function properly.
Matthew, you did a wonderful job asking your question, and you are right about everything that you're saying at the high school. Currently, we have about four different models of laptops working at the high school now. So our hope, we can't guarantee, but our hope is that they will operate 99.9% better because they will be brand-new and all the same. We're working on the backend as far as the infrastructure is concerned, so that connectivity works out well. And as far as all the programs, we'll do the very best we can, because we want the very best for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you very much.
And to that point, Matt, I heard the same complaint before I left for this meeting from my son, who is [inaudible]. I'm well aware.
Maybe we should delay that moment.
Hi, everyone. My name is Janine Jansen, and I'm here tonight with my husband, Brent Jansen. And we've been living in Mawa for four years at 129 East Loeb Road in Mawa. We have three children, and we were attracted to this neighborhood because of the wonderful schools. Our oldest is six years old. He started kindergarten at Betsy Ross last year in a room of 14 children. He is now in a room with 25 children, and I have many concerns about this. So tonight, I wanted to come and express my concern and ask that the board consider having a lower recommendation, a lower amount of children. I realize the New Jersey law is 25, but having my child go from 14 to 25 has affected him. The feedback I get from working with the principal and the teacher is that he's a good child. He kind of sits in the middle of the pack. He doesn't call much attention to himself. He's a good boy. He's behind in reading and math, and I'm taking measures to do that and working very closely with Dr. Bavino's teacher. And I think they are very highly skilled. So this feedback is not based on their individual performance or how they're working with me. My feedback is that we are in an excellent school district, and to have twenty-five children in the class, and I hear the feedback that it's in the other school district, that greatly concerns me. I've spoken with the other moms. Some of the other moms say that their child's not challenged in the room, they're bored, or the other spectrum. They're struggling, they don't know all of their classmates' names. So I wanted to come and just storytell that a little bit, to really make it authentic and real of what they're experiencing in the room, that I'm sure his teacher's a little stressed, dealing with twenty-five children. I am not an educator, so I'm not here to say, you know, what's the best practice, but from my research, it seems like eighteen is a really great classroom size, probably not realistic with budget concerns. So I just want to put that out there, that I have realistic expectations. But I do think going into the year with twenty-four, twenty-five in a room, it greatly disappoints me from being here. So I just ask that you consider that, and when you look at the next year, I realize the ship has sailed on this year, right? I understand that. My ask isn't for a, let's change it, fix it now. They're doing measures to help in the room and take them out and break them out, and I appreciate that. But my ask is that you consider this for next year. Consider bringing it down for everyone. We want our children to succeed, and it's directly correlated that smaller classroom sizes helps. So that's my appeal to you, to all of you. I'm sure you're aware.
I am, I am very aware, and you may not be an educator, but you are incredibly articulate and speak, and speak right from the heart as far as your child is concerned. And so I would like to give you a little bit of background, if I may, as well as the board, because we are aware. There's no doubt about it. There were three kindergarten classes last year at Betsy Ross. They had fourteen, fifteen, and fifty, right? So your son's part of the fourteen.
Right on target.
Absolutely. So going into the summer, we had two move-ins. So the kindergarten class, so the kids are going up to first, so we went up to fifteen, fifteen, sixty. So we let the summer play out, because the summer is when a lot of people tend to move in across the board in all grade levels, primarily in the younger grades. In August, we had forty-six students, and we made the decision on August fourteenth with Dr. Bavino and the central office staff, the day before the classes went live with forty-six students, that we were going to go down to two sections at twenty-three, twenty-three. And you made reference to other schools in the district having a twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and we do go through years like that. So we made the decision to go to twenty-three. On August fifteenth, we made the decision on the fourteenth, right, Dr. Bavino?
Yep.
Thank you. I was just going to say it, so I'm not putting you on the spot. On August fifteenth, we received two move-in students and had two sections now of twenty-four, twenty-four.
Right.
And it's August fifteenth. Again, we've run classes at twenty-four before. But what we said to ourselves at the end of the summer was, in September, we're going to meet as a central office staff with Dr. Bavino, and we're going to determine what's going on with this class and whether or not additional support is needed. And in September, we went ahead and did that, and you know that.
Yes, I do.
Because in September, the board approved upon our recommendation two paras to be placed into the classroom. Now, not only were they two paras placed into the classroom, but they are New Jersey teacher-licensed paras placing in the classroom.
And we appreciate it.
No, which is a good thing, right? Because we knew with the twenty-four, right, that we were in a, in a, in a very important year. First grade is a very important year, regardless of where a child sits academically.
Right.
So we're sitting at twenty-four, we've got the two paras, we're higher than normal, but we know that we've got two certified people in the classroom. And then the year unfolds. And on December tenth.
Yes.
We get one more student to move in, and so one of those two classes becomes twenty-five, twenty-four.
Yes.
So we meet with Dr. Bavino again, so I could say we are aware. We meet with Dr. Bavino again, and we really have two choices, and the board probably knows what they are. Choice one is, is that we split our first grade into three sections. So we take twenty-nine students, twenty-five and twenty-four, twenty-four and twenty-four, that have kind of lived with each other since August, and we take them out and we remove them, and we put them with another teacher. Choice number two is, is that we remain as we are now with two certified teachers in the classroom. It is our choice and our professional opinion.
Yes.
That remaining where we are right now is the best thing that we can do for the children, instructionally, academically, and at this point in their lives, socially. Which brings me to the last part. Is it something that we can certainly consider? Yes, twenty-five is the number. Yes, the State Department tells us kindergarten twenty-five is the number. Can we take a look at it? We absolutely can. And in a perfect world, we want smaller class sizes. Fourteen is a little small.
A little small.
Right. But sometimes you don't know when you're on that border where you're ending at twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two. If you get another student, we allow some room for cushion, but it's not a perfect science. What I can tell you is, is that we've taken this seriously since the beginning of the summer. We're not going to stop now.
So, thank you.
Moving forward.
I appreciate all that background. It's a bit of a culture shock for them, and I appreciate it, and I see why you made the decision you did. To me, this is a first-world problem, but it's something that together we can solve.
We can.
And make it better the next time. So that's what I ask.
We can, we can work to see what we can do to make it better next time, and we always will, and we always do.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make this quick, because I can tell Ben's getting a little antsy. It's getting close to nine o'clock.
Can we be honest with you, so is De Silva?
I can't see, we're from that side, so.
Brett Kopf on Franklin Street. I'm here to talk about playgrounds, and I'll make it real quick. The issue of playgrounds at GW and Betsy Ross have been brought up over the years. I'm asking the Facilities Committee to take a real serious look at it. Our HSO secretary, Impali, has provided us, and Dr. Showman can attest, probably a stack...
I have it all.
Yeah, of environmental information about the rubber chips that are used, but I wanted to bring up two additional points. These rubber chips are absolutely disgusting. We had one mother come into an HSO meeting with stained clothes, permanently stained clothes. I can't imagine what these kids are doing with their hands during recess or whatever. The second point is, these playgrounds were built way back when, when we did not have full-day kindergarten. The five-year-olds, the six-year-olds were not out there for recess, were not playing in our playgrounds during school hours, obviously. I'm also asking the Facilities Committee to look at the equipment we have there. Is it appropriate for kindergarten-age kids? I can tell you, from the GW perspective, we have a great, we have a great playground, but there's probably a certain pieces of equipment that I probably wouldn't feel comfortable putting a five- or a six-year-old on. So just as a request from the GW committee, uh, community, excuse me, I'm asking Facilities to please look at it in a serious way, and hopefully maybe we can get it on the, on the docket to be done this coming summer, so at least we could see it maybe completed by September of nineteen.
The Facilities Committee did speak about this last night. It has been on their radar for the last couple of years. We have done a lot of background information as far as how much it would cost to do, because GW is not the only surface playground with the rubber material. I can, I can tell you that it is not a cheap proposition for the board. It is one that they would need to budget and roll out based on the age of what those playgrounds look like. But it is on their radar. They discussed it on Monday evening. They will have the costs reviewed with them again as far as what it looks like, what the rollout looks like.